I asked Mr. Ronnie Ford to come tonight. He is the pastor at New Pleasant Point United Baptist Church, and he is a citizen here in Russell Springs. And I kind of forgot about Ronnie until I went down the other night to the technology college, and man, he done an awesome job down there last Sunday. And I told Chris, I said, let's get him on the roll call because we're going to need him a time or two each year. So we're going to stand, and Ronnie's going to lead us in a prayer. And then after that, remain standing, and Mr. Assistant Chief Ryan Shepard will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for giving us this time to get to tonight. We pray, Lord, that you will lead and guide in all the things that are decisions that have been made. Thank you for your Spirit that guides us and meets us every day. Thank you most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, who gives us the hope of eternal life. And we just thank you for the life that we have here in this little town, Lord. We are a group, and we love so much. We just pray for all of our councilmen and our mayor, Lord, that you will continue showing them the right thing to do and the right way to go. We just pray for, Lord, those that we've been reminded of that are sick, that need your touch. We know that you are the great physician, able to heal. We pray, Lord, that you take care of those people that are in a condition, Lord. We pray that you'll see us through this virus, Lord, that you will always give you thank. Thank you for all the things that you do, and give you thanks for that especially. Best as you go through this meeting tonight, be with each one here tonight. May they be blessed to know your presence in Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Thank you, brother Ronnie.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you again, Ronnie. I appreciate you. Thank you, Brian. We called Russell Springs, August 12th, 2021, regular meeting to order. I need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakey.
Here.
Mr. Skaggs.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Holt.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
And Mr. Hudson is absent. Do you have a call here?
Thank you, Chris. And you all remember Timmy. He called just a minute ago, and he's sick, and he's down. So remember him in his prayer. The first thing on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes. Chris sent them out, interviewed over them. If you ain't kind of strove through them there, I need a motion on the minutes.
Make motion, accept minutes.
Thank you, David. Got a motion, it's second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Larry, Larry and David.
Read it.
Read it.
Yeah. Got your head down there, can't see you, but I'm right there.
You ain't listening, my other brother Larry.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. The next thing on the agenda is acceptance of cash, first, financial statements. We need a motion to pay the bills. I hope you have looked through them, too. Have you got any questions on any of them?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
I second.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Sherri.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Motion carries, Brian.
Hey, the next thing on the agenda, unless you all have some old business, I have no old business on the agenda. Does any of the council have anything old business-wise that you need to bring up at this time?
I think you know my stand on the sidewalks. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Them boys are working hard today, and it's looking so much better.
And it was hot.
It was hot. But they were up there grinding like who wouldn't have it. I love it. It looks good, too.
All right. If nothing on old business, I've got some new business. Before we get into it, I want to recognize a couple people here at the meeting tonight. Mark Barnett, come upstairs, please. I don't know if y'all know Mark or not, but he's been with the city 25 years. He ran our backhoe, he worked water, sewer, he done about anything he has for me that I've asked him on the council and being the mayor. And he's getting retired, and we always want to recognize our employees that retire. Mark did 25 years at the City of Russell Springs, and we appreciate him for that. So we just want to recognize him and give him a plaque and say, happy retirement from the mayor and the city council from you guys, because he's one of us, and he's special. And hey, even though you're retired, you're still one of us. So I want to give you a plaque. Appreciate you. Anytime you need us, we're here for you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, my friend.
Thank you. I thank every one of you guys and gals on the council out here. They appreciate it. Thank you, and it's been good working with you.
You didn't check with me to do this. The next thing, we've got a little, I don't know if anybody's seen the front page of the paper this week or not, but anytime one of our employees here go above and beyond the call of duty, we definitely want to recognize them. So I think Chief Curtis has got a plaque here. He's going to recognize somebody here with.
This is to Officer Necessary, it's a life-saving award. It says, we hereby honor Officer Deborah Necessary. This award is presented to Deborah Necessary for her actions that saved a life, a human life. On Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, on this call, Officer Necessary, preventing that person from ending their life, and your heroic actions will always be remembered. Presented by myself, Mayor Thomas, and the Police Department.
Almost felt a little, yeah, I just know that any one of the other officers would have done the same thing. So, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Let Chief down, sit down back. He's about, he's just been out of hospital a little while. He's had the COVID, so we're glad to have him back, I'll tell you that. Not saying Brian didn't do a great job, but I think Brian's glad to see him back, too. I will move into new business, and the first thing in new business is Resolution 2021-05. It's, the KLC's asked us to do September as City Government Month. It come down from J.D. Chaney and League of Cities, so we're going to do a resolution in their honor. So Chris, I think Scotty, he's going to read it.
Resolution 2021-05, City of Russell Springs, August 12th, 2021. Whereas civics education is important to ensure Kentucky children develop an interest in understanding of local government and their role in the community, whereas Kentucky academic standards for social studies require instruction on citizenship and local government for entry-level elementary school children. Whereas involving and informing students of local government programs and duties can provide an opportunity for entire families to connect with vital services and programs. Whereas there are 416 cities in Kentucky, and 55% of the state's population lives in a city. Whereas City Government Month is a civics awareness campaign that educates elementary school students about city services by providing teacher lesson plans, students coloring activity books, and classroom materials. Whereas City Government Month calls on city officials to get involved in their local schools and in educating and engaging elementary school students in city government. And whereas the Kentucky League of Cities Board of Directors has declared September 2021 as City Government Month in Kentucky. Now therefore it be resolved that the City of Russell Springs does hereby designate September 2021 as City Government Month in the city. Further resolved that city officials and employees are encouraged to collaborate with local elementary schools to educate students about their city government and to engage them in city services. Signed, Mayor Eddie Thomas, and Test City Clerk Christopher Ramsey. And only a motion and a second to accept that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution or adopt it, or whatever you do to him.
Second, yeah.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Carries, Brian.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, counsel. And when you get called from the elementary school to the middle school, and you voted to do it, so they'll be calling, somebody wants you to come up and probably give a little, I told them I'd come September 12th, I think, me and Bobby Dunbar's going up that day, and I said, Phil, where you calling?
What do you all want to do?
You go up and tell them a little bit of what's your job, if it's a council.
I will volunteer.
A little bit about your city.
Be happy to.
I think you've got kindergarten kids. You'll be okay.
That's more my age group, isn't it?
Next thing is Resolution 2021-06. It's a USDA vehicle grant. We've been contacted by the DLG about another vehicle. We got one that's going to probably run out this year, and Chris has been contacted by them over there, and he's going to read. I'll need a first and a second to accept it, but after he gets done reading, I'll explain our part of it.
Resolution 2021-06, Resolution of Authorization, Russell Springs Police Vehicle Project. The Russell Springs City Council hereby orders the filing of an application with the USDA Rule of Development for funding under the Community Facilities Program for the following project, Russell Springs Police Vehicle Project. The Russell Springs City Council additionally authorizes Mayor Eddie Thomas to sign the necessary documents that may be required for implementation of the project. Action herein ordered shall be duly recorded in the midst of this public meeting of the Russell Springs City Council held this 12th day of August 2021. Signed, Eddie Thomas, Mayor, signed Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
This is the same thing we did, I think, about five years ago. It's, they're going to, we're just going to pay a percentage for a new vehicle, and it's going to cost, it's a $38,000 vehicle, and then it gets outfitted. So you're looking somewhere between around $50,000 for a brand-new vehicle. It's going to cost the City of Russell Springs $1,1219 is our part. We have to keep this vehicle at least five years for 100,000 miles. So in other words, we're getting a brand-new vehicle for $11,219.
We'd like a motion to accept.
Got a motion by?
Resolution 2021-06. I'll second.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. The next thing on your agenda is Resolution 2021-07, and that is for the law enforcement protection vest. Susan Meltin out at the sheriff's office has helped us with the grant, and some of our police officers' vests, bulletproof vests, is outdated, and she's helped us obtain a grant to where we think we'll have each officer come in, they'll come in and measure them and bid them for a brand-new vest, and she's, it's about an $8,770, $8,000 grant. And Chris, you want to read it?
Resolution for Application for Administration of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Projects, Resolution 21-07, City of Russell Springs, Kentucky 42642. Project Law Enforcement Protection Vest. The City of Russell Springs, Kentucky Police Department is requesting KOHS Law Enforcement Protection Funds in the amount of $7,315 to offset, if applicable, the purchase of 11 body armored vests. The 11 full-time officers are sharing eight vests that have eight to 10 years of wear. This request is immediate and essential. A resolution, the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any dockets which are deemed necessary by KOHS to facilitate and administer the project and to act as an authorized correspondent for this project. This resolution also establishes procurement policy for any KOHS-approved project for the fiscal year 2021 application cycle. Whereas Russell Springs, Kentucky desires to make an application for the United States Department of Homeland Security and/or come with Kentucky funds for a project to be administered by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. Whereas it is recognized that any application for an approval of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security funds impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the county. Now therefore it be resolved this 12th day of August 2021 by the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute and furnish all required documentation, including a memorandum of agreement as may be required by KOHS for the furtherance of the approved reference project and to act as the authorized correspondent for said project. For the purpose of any KOHS-funded project using FY 2021 funds, the city will use the provisions of KRS 45A for the purpose of equipment and/or services. For any equipment and/or services under $30,000, three plus will be obtained. For any equipment and/or services that exceed $30,000, the provision of KRS 45A will apply. Done this 12th day of August 2021. Motion made by, seconded by, members present voting in favor, members present voting against. Signed by Mayor Eddie Thomas, and testified Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
Any question?
I'm just a little bit confused. The grants for $8,000, and where's the $30,000? What was that, Chris?
The grants for $7,315, it says if it should exceed the, if, then it has to be bid, but it's not. That's just the provision in the language.
Now, how much will the vest cost total? Will this pay for them in full?
Yes, it should. The amount was $7,315. We're thinking it'll be pretty close, right, Ron? Or maybe even under.
It's kind of like getting a car for $11,000. I think that we, I make the motion, we do this.
Sure he'll need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Chief Curtis, just make sure that a police officer knows all our council behind them. They want to buy best equipment to take it out.
We appreciate it.
The next thing on it is the asphalt bids, and we've done this the last, this is our second year of doing this. We bid everything out, and last year, the bid went to Gaddy Shamrock at $78 a ton. This year, they got it at $84 a ton, and so it's went up $6, and we thought it probably would. Then you bid out the maintenance and Selby, Brandon got the bid on it, because what we do with him is, is he, we find a bad place, and I'll get to that on the mayor's report in a minute. We send him out, he goes out and looks at it, comes back, he makes a bid, he sends the bid to Chris, and me and Terry looks at it, and if it's, seems like it's a fire nut bid, then we sign it, give it back to Chris, Chris calls him and has him to do it. So that's kind of, and when I get on the mayor's report, you'll hear a little bit more about what we're doing right now here in the city. And I'm sure some of you's probably doesn't see me, Ricky Barnes, but go ahead, Chris.
I'll just need a resolution to accept both those, and there are only one bid per company. So for Gaddy was only one bid on the asphalt, and the maintenance was only bid by Selby.
I make a motion to accept. Thanks, Larry.
I'll second.
Sure he's second.
And it's a motion to accept both bids.
Correct. Yeah. However, it needs to be worked.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Motion carries, Brian.
All right, I'll let you tell you, if you've got a bottle of water open, because this is the law. This is the 2022 Interlock and Agreement, the E911 Agreement that we entered in with the City of Jamestown and the EMS and the county. The Monday night, the county passed it. It's going to get $25,000 in gas authority, and that goes toward this every year. This year, it's going to be $35,000. Chris, read in that. Just read it, Chris.
I apologize for having to read so much tonight, but 2021-2022 Interlock E911 Agreement. This agreement herein, agreement is entered into on this 12th day of August 2021, binding between the City of Jamestown, Kentucky, City of Russell Springs, Kentucky, Russell County, Kentucky, binding through the Russell County Fiscal Court and the Russell County Ambulance Board, the parties after this, for the purpose of establishing a reliable and efficient E911 service for the Russell County, Kentucky, for the time period set forth below witness. Whereas all the above-named parties recognize the need for a continuing E911 dispatch service for all citizens of Russell County, Kentucky. Whereas the parties agree that each entity by party named herein benefits directly from the E911 service, and therefore recognize the respective obligations, benefits, and burdens of each party contribute to the continuing and stability of the E911 service. Whereas the parties agree that E911 service is a distinct and separate entity from the Russell County Ambulance Service. Whereas the parties desire to be in compliance with all applicable state and/or federal requirements or policy. Now therefore, as mutually agreed by the undersigned parties, that E911 service is herein established under the premise and conditions set forth in this agreement, Section 1, Funding, 1.1, Sources of Funding. By agreement of the parties, that E911 Dispatch Service shall be funded by the following sources. Number 1, CMRS funds and any other monies, if any, paid to 911 or LINK. Number 2, City of Russell Springs monthly obligation of $2,916.67. 3, City of Jamestown monthly obligation, $2,916.67. And 4, Russell County Ambulance Board monthly obligation of $2,083.33. And filed and balance of the funds necessary to maintain the E911 service, i.e. the amount required after the receipt of the sources set out in 1-4, shall be provided by the Russell County Fiscal Court. 1.2, Schedule of Payment. The obligation described in Section 1.1 shall be paid on the following schedule. A, the City of Russell Springs shall pay a lump sum payment of $35,000 upon the agreement of the execution of this agreement. This lump sum means the annual obligation of the City of Russell Springs, $2,916.67 per month for one year. Once this payment has been made, the City of Russell Springs shall have no further financial obligation for the one-year term of this agreement. B, the City of Jamestown shall pay a lump sum payment of $35,000 upon the execution of this agreement. This lump sum means the annual obligation, the City of Jamestown, $2,916.67 per month for one year. Once this payment has been made, the City of Jamestown shall have no further financial obligation for the one-year term of this agreement. C, the City of the Russell County Ambulance Board shall pay the monthly payment of $2,083.33 for a one-year term of this agreement. The first $2,083.33 payments shall be paid upon the execution of this agreement. The Russell County Ambulance Board shall have no further financial obligation beyond these 12 payments of $2,083.33 each. D, the obligations of the Russell County Fiscal Court are ongoing, and funds shall be provided on as needed and timely basis. The Russell County Fiscal Court recognizes that any stores of funds herein determines this agreement shall fall solely to the Russell County Fiscal Court. E, CMRS funds or any other funds received by E911 shall be deposited into the E911 account when received. Section 1.3, E911 Accounts. The E911 service shall have its own bank account and shall be responsible for meetings. Its established budget with the funding sources described herein, E911 funds shall be intermingled, shall not be intermingled with any other funds. 1.4, Shortages of Funds. Parties acknowledge that the E911 is not a taxing district, and therefore has no independent source of funding other than these sources described wherein. In the event of the primary funding source, i.e. the City of Jamestown fees, City of Russell Springs fees, Russell County Ambulance Board fees, or CMRS funds, are insignificant to meet the budget established by E911, any shortfall shall be addressed solely to the Russell County Fiscal Court, who shall be responsible for any shortfall in funding. Neither the City of Russell Springs, City of Jamestown, nor the Russell County Ambulance Board bear any financial responsibility other than that obligation set out in Section 1.2. Section 1.5, Budget. Budget year covered by this agreement has been presented to the parties, and the parties agree to provide respective funding in shortfalls, if any, is comprised upon the acceptance of the proposed budget of the E911s adherent to said budget. Section 2, Emergency 911 Service Board. Section 2.1, Emergency 911 Service Board. The parties hereby create an E, Emergency 911 Service Board required by the National Crime Information Center, the NCIC, shall be comprised of the following. Number 1, Russell County Sheriff. Number 2, Mayor of Jamestown. Number 3, Mayor of Russell Springs. Number 4, Emergency Management Director. Number 5, Chairman of EMS Board. The parties acknowledge that the importance of the compliance of this LINK policy and agree that the Russell County Attorney Office will provide, albeit in compliance official, for LINK 911 coordination and use the county-wide dispatch service to route ambulance, fire, police, and other emergency services to the point's need within Russell County, Kentucky. Russell County Attorney's Office is designated LINK provider with the 911 state and federal regulation. Section 2.2, Management Control, Parties, Personnel, and Policy, or Priorities, Personnel and Policy. The 911 Emergency Service Board shall have Management Control. Management Control is herein defined as the authority of the Board to set and enforce, number 1, the priorities; number 2, standards for the selection, supervision, and termination of the E911 personnel; number 3, policy governing, the operation of computers, circuits, and telecommunications terminals. Section 2.3, Board Members and Reporting Requirements. The 911 Emergency Service Board shall hold regular meetings at least once a quarter or more frequently, with the majority of the board in attendance. A copy of the minutes of each meeting shall be forwarded to the State CJIS Systems Office. CSO currently is Gary M. Jennings, CJIS Compliance Supervisor, Kentucky State Police, 1250 Willow Road, Franford, Kentucky, 406, at 1 within 10 days of each meeting. Section 2.4, Reports to Fiscal Court. Because the Russell County Fiscal Court is providing funding for the E911 services set above, could be responsible for any shortfalls and proposed bugs, the parties agree that it would be appropriate for periodic reports to be made to the Russell County Fiscal Court. In order to prevent compounding of further funding issues, the 911 Emergency Service or its designee, the E911 Director, Board Chairperson, or other designee, should provide the Fiscal Court with monthly budget reports so as to keep the Fiscal Court informed of funding issues. Either the 911 Emergency Service Board or its designee may address the Fiscal Court upon request regarding funding issues in a timely manner. Section 3, Facilities and Expenses. Section 3.1, E911 Facilities. The E911 service shall be operated in the present ambulance service building in the facilities now occupied by E911 Dispatch. However, E911 has no ownership of said facility, but instead shall operate as a tenant of the Russell County Ambulance Board and the Russell County Fiscal Court. 3.2, Utilities. The E911 service shall be solely responsible under its proposed budget for all utility costs associated with the operating service without exception. This cost included are not limited to telephone services, internet services, cable, or any audiovisual service, electrical services, and/or sewer services, if applicable. E911 facilities shall have its own electric meter for its electrical use and shall maintain a separate account for each. The Russell County Ambulance Service provides, agrees to provide water, ground, maintenance. However, the Russell County Ambulance Service is not responsible for the maintenance of the E911 indoor facility. Such maintenance shall be sole responsibility of the E911 service. E911 shall maintain its space in a clean and sanitary manner. Section 3.3, billing and payroll expense. Any billing and payroll expense for the E911 service shall be the sole responsibility of E911 at the direction of the LINK, NCIC Board. 3.4, Miscellaneous Expenses. The parties agree that a number of miscellaneous expenses are typically attached to any organization or facility. Because such expenses are difficult to anticipate, the parties agree that E911 services shall be responsible for any incurred expense not otherwise noted herein. Section 3.4.1, Repairs. In the event repairs of an equipment, restroom facilities, or in proportion to E911 occupation premises, the cost shall be borne by the E911 service. Section 3.4.2, Certification, License, Cost, and Insurance. E911 service assumes all responsibility, including final burden for its own certification and licensing cost, if any. Likewise, E911 service is solely responsible for any required insurance for the operation of its service and/or facility, including liability insurance on a specific premises occupied by E911 services. 3.5, Administrative Assistance. The E911 service may, but is not required to utilize the Russell County Fiscal Court for assistance with basic administrative duties, including payroll-related responsibilities. However, the Russell County Fiscal Court is not responsible for establishing or amending the E911 budget for it, or for ensuring the budget meets projections or other requirements the E-911 budget for it, or for ensuring the budget meets projections or other requirements. These services shall be solely administrative in nature. Section three point six, mapping coordinator. The parties agree that a 911 mapping coordinator is necessary for providing accurate E-911 services. The mapping coordinator shall be paid from the E-911 budget for eight hours per week of mapping responsibilities. Section three, iteration of the agreement. It is the intended and undersigned parties of this agreement shall commence on the day of the execution. Show and period shall expire at midnight, one calendar year from said date. Section five, servability. To the extent of any provision or clauses in agreement that is provided by any law or is deemed unenforceable, such prohibist or unenforceability shall not invalidate any of the remaining provisions or clauses wherein. Section six, entire agreement. The entire understanding of the parties is embodied in this agreement. This agreement is signed and dated by the parties below constitute a final written expression of all terms of this agreement and is a complete and exclusive statement of those terms. Section seven, modifications of agreement. No modification of this agreement shall be binding upon the parties of any extent unless such modification is in writing and duly accepted in writing. We have read and agreed to all the above terms and conditions, which are thoroughly understood, and testimony whereof witnessed, signatures of the parties, by the represented, authorized representative, on this blank day of blank 2021. So this 2021 interlock agreement is hereby adopted by the Russell County Fiscal Court as approved at a meeting on the ninth day of August and signed by Gary Roberson, Russell County Judge Executive, attested by the Russell County Fiscal Court Clerk, and declared in full force and effect. The next one is for the City of Jamestown, that they're signed and attested by their city clerk. The next one is the signed by the Mayor of Russell Springs and attested by the city clerk. And the fourth one is a signature required by the Chairman of the Russell County Ambulance Board and attested by the Director of the Russell County EMS. Then it's to be reviewed and approved by Daniel Cameron, Attorney General, Commissar of Kentucky. This instrument was prepared by the Honorable Kevin S. Sheeran, Russell County Attorney.
Anybody got any questions about it?
I've got one question. I read over this before I came, and I'm still kind of confused, and I should know this, so it's probably a dumb question. We, we have a set fee that we pay. County has a set, or the, and the City of Jamestown does, and the ambulance service does. Does the county's amount that they pay, historically, I know we can't project this year, does it equal what, what the other entities are paying? Does it exceed it? Is it less than, or is it equal? Do we have those figures?
Last figure that was given to me, I believe that their amount they pay was around one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
So we're not paying more than they are?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure everybody's kind of fair.
Any more questions?
And the reason the ambulance service pays less, I'm thinking, is because they provide the facility, so that would be considered like rent. Is that right?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know.
Anybody ask any questions? Any more questions? Any more questions? I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Interlock agreement now.
I'll make the motion. We need a.
Need a second.
I'll say.
Ricky, you'll second. Thanks for your role.
Mr. Blaken.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Cares.
Chris, the next thing is ordinance twenty-two-one oh three, and it's a budget amendment. It's for the CDVG, and Timmy had sponsored this, and Hady's not here tonight. This is, we don't have to have, this is going to be the first reading of it. Chris is going to read it. We don't have to have a vote on the first reading, and it's just a word, we can accept the hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for old sewer bill, old water bills, and thanks to the, and the ones up front, it's with, to thank you all too, thanks to the ad for putting this together, or helping us work through it and getting it, so. Chris, we don't have to have a motion of that, or we don't have to have a debate.
This ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero three, budget amendment, was sponsored by Council Member Hudson. Ordinance twenty-two-three dash zero three, City of Russell Springs, Russell Springs, Kentucky, ignorance related to a budget or amendments. Being ordained by the City of Russell Springs, Section One Amendment to the twenty-two-one, twenty-two budget, the twenty-two-one dash twenty-two City of Russell Springs budget shall be amended to include one hundred and twenty-six thousand CDVG grant. Section two, servability of clauses and ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and if any part, section, or subsection, paragraph, or clause in this ordinance shall be unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, then only such part, section, subsection, paragraph, or clause shall be voided, and any remaining parts, sections, and subsections, paragraphs, and clauses hereof shall remain in full force and effect. Section three, record, first reading. This ordinance received first reading at a city council meeting held on August the twelfth, 2021. Section four, records of passage upon vote, motion of blank, second by blank, voting in favor of abstaining. The foregoing ordinance received passage, signed by Eddie Thomas Meyer, signed by Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk, slash Clerk.
That's our first reading of that, so we'll have a second reading next month, or we have to have a special call, even if we will get a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So, uh, next thing on agenda, I've got Aaron Horner here, and he brought his back, Larry Wilson, with, with, know you was coming, Ms. Meyer, glad you're here, glad to see you. I think Aaron's got some things to share with the council.
Good evening, and thank you all for the audience here. In front of you, and I have extras if anybody'd like to take a look, but you have packets in front of you. Kentucky Area Resources, that's the title of this, and what this is, I guess I should introduce myself. My name is Aaron Horner, I'm the Director of Research Programming for the Cumberland's and the South Central Workforce Development Board. This is Meyer Wilson, and she is the Director of Workforce for the Cumberland's Workforce Development Board. What I'm proposing is a joint venture between the Cumberland's Workforce Development Board, the County of Russell County, and the City of Jamestown, and the City of Russell Springs. What we have done is we have piloted the development of a web-based application named CARES, Kentucky Area Resources. And the goal, the ultimate goal of this is to put access to the resources in local communities at the fingertips of the individuals that are in need of such resources. And I'll just talk through it. If you want to stop me, I can answer any questions, or I can do all questions at the end. So if you flip over to slide two, right now, you can go to www.cares.us. We are in a live beta test version of this web-based application. It can be accessed on a mobile device, it can be accessed on a computer, any way that you have access to the internet, you can gain access to this web-based application. And the goal is, it's, it's very simple, and the goal is for this to be extremely user-friendly, where anybody can access it and look at it fairly easily. So on slide three, if you were select off that main page, explore CARES. You're going to input some basic information that we can track. We're going to be able to track specific data of who is accessing this web-based application, who is needing these resources, who's looking at it, where are they going? And we're able to, to see if an individual is repeatedly accessing our application, maybe that individual needs to be, somebody needs to reach out to them. Our ultimate goal is for sustainability, for somebody to have a, a self-sustaining way of life. That, that's just, that's our goal, and then ultimately, by utilization of resources and, and a plan of action being in place, and strengthen our workforce. So if you look on slide four, that's a general, what we require to access the information. It's very simple, and once they provide it, that basic data information, they're able to access that main resource page. That information is strictly confidential. It's only able to be viewed by my staff and I. We are able to provide that data, we're going to track that data, we're going to identify within communities, are there holes, or is there a need within our community that we can share with city councils, the Fiscal Court, with nonprofits, or, or community partners, to try to fill that void, to assist the individuals within our community? They're going to be able from that to be able to view and select what, what resources they would like more information on. Slide six, if you look, there's a search bar, and the individual can type in and refine their search. If they're in need of career assistance, they're going to be able to type in jobs, career assistance, anything like that, employment, and our resources that are here in Russell County are going to populate, and they're going to be able to click on that. Same thing with drug, alcohol, mental health resources, things of that nature. They're going to be able to select the local resources that are here and, and contact them in real time. And then of course, the food resources. Now, I have a, a selection there of God's Food Pantry. Everybody here knows what God's Food Pantry is, and, and where, how to get ahold of them, and where to go. That's not the case for everybody. So, and this is, applies to, to any of the cards there, but you can select that. If you're on a mobile device, you can click that number, and it's going to call the number that God's Food Pantry has listed, or the one that they provide the workforce board, where they can get in contact. If you select the address, it's going to map you. If you're on a mobile device, it's going to map you, and you'll see a, an example of the map on, on the following page. So this information's going to be able to be tailored, depending on whatever partner agency that we're working with. We'll go over to slide eleven, that's the monitoring. Everything we do, at the Workforce Board, we like to track data. We like to know how to be more effective and the most efficient we possibly can. And we are able to track the hits to the website per day. You can see that, actually that day, you'll see two hits to that website, and that was me and, and Corey and my assistants to make this and this presentation. We're also able to, to look at the visitors we've had on the website by their intake data, by the names that are coming in, we're able to look and view that, and you'll see as an example of that on slide fourteen, that's an example of an individual's card. Everybody gets a card, so we're able to address each situation. Now, if at any point in time, an individual requests assistance, they want someone to reach out to them, that information comes directly to a member of our staff. We're able to utilize the information they put in and develop a plan of action, or, or connect them with the appropriate partner from second one of being able to review that data. So if you'll see sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, that's just an example of data that we, or of data that we collect from specific individuals. Slide nineteen, this is going to require marketing and education for our community, for our partners, and for individuals that are going to make use of this. We intend on utilizing social media, website, the city resources, things that are already in place to get the word out. We want the resources here to be a part of this. And word of mouth, that's a huge, a huge use of how we get in or contact individuals. The utility, like I said when I started, the ultimate goal is to provide the, the citizens of our community resources that they need at their fingertips, an ease of access to that. In our mind, immediately, we'll go to the homeless population, or people leaving incarceration. I'm here to tell you, and I can tell you this, it's a very personal story, but we had an individual that, he has the same education that I do. He was able to reach out to us via, via one of our virtual intake options. He has the same degree I do, very similar background to the one I have, had food insecurity during the pandemic. That, you know, that's an individual that, that would go unnoticed. There are, they are here, they are in our communities, even though they are not the ones that come to the front of our mind when we think about these individuals. But, you know, we're going to reach individuals and assist individuals across all spectrums. And they're provided that case management by the appropriate entity. We're going to connect them with who they need to be talking to. Our local businesses are going to see an increase of referrals as far as our second mile, goodwill. They are going to get increased traffic and increased revenue from servicing the clients that are referred to them. And our ultimate goal is in, is to increase workforce participation. By removal of barriers, by, by streamlining these processes, we're going to be able to put more people to work, and that's a need. Everybody's talking about the workforce problem, that's its community problem. And by addressing the individuals that are, you know, that comprise the workforce in this community, we're able to address that. As far as resource saving, so I, I have a law enforcement background. I know from my past, there's a lot of time spent trying to find a solution, you know, the police are, are problem solvers, they have to solve any problem they get called to. A lot of time is utilized, man-hours, transportation time, trying to find an appropriate solution to things. This will eliminate a lot of that time. They're going to be able to provide them with this web-based application or the information they're in, and be able to step away and know that that situation's being handled. That's taken care of, not from a criminal complaint aspect. E-911, you already spoke about that. This is going to save time for dispatch trying to take complaints and dispatch to appropriate officers. They're going to be able to say, hey, here's the resources. They can look up the resources, they're on their dispatch console, or they're going to be able to provide them this information and, and feel comfortable that, hey, this is getting, you know, their needs are becoming, being met. So, you know, and of course, there's going to be accountability monitoring. One thing that, that I, you know, personally, I can't stand is somebody taking advantage of kindness, taking advantage of services, not utilizing the, the, the kind-heartedness of people that is out here. We're going to be able to see if somebody is, you know, taking advantage of the system in a bad way. Cost breakdown, now there is a cost associated with this. The total cost to build this application is forty-five thousand dollars. We at the Cumberland's Workforce Board have fronted that, and it is built. That is covered by us. Next year, so the year twenty, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five, we are proposing for the domain, the maintenance, the reporting, and anything, everything's going to be managed by the Workforce Board. It's going to be four to eight hundred dollars for a three-year agreement for us to take that and handle that. Now, the cost split among the city and county governments, like I said, will be four to eight hundred dollars per entity, beginning next year, in twenty-twenty-two, during the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, I should add, but, and also, also we'll be prepared to, to show and report usage. How is this service being utilized? Who are we serving? How many, over this, you know, as much as you all would like to hear from me. But in addition to all that, I, we're ready to pilot this now. We're ready to, to hit the go button and get this started today. And so for the next ten months, from August twenty-twenty-one to June twenty-twenty-two, for this pilot to be completed and to be brought online, and for us to start being able to show the utility of this, we have to pay for the domain and the hosting for this trial period. That's four hundred dollars a month, resulting, resulting in four thousand dollars for the entities in the county in Russell Springs. Split between Jamestown, Russell Springs, and the county, that's thirteen hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to get us to the next year. That's what I'm coming seeking from the council, is that, that total of thirteen hundred, thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, and to test pilot, to get us to, to see if this is something that we would want to adopt on a three-year contract. Now, I didn't, I shared this with the Fiscal Court on, on Monday, and this is not something I actually typed in my notes, but I felt approved to share with you all. Over this region, we have independently talked with, serviced, however you want to classify that, six hundred and sixty-nine individuals, specifically in Russell County since August of last year, so twelve months ago. Two hundred and ten residents of Russell County, we have interacted with, but from that, we have an eighty-one percent success rate of being able to connect them with who they need to talk to, what they need, their, their resources. And even- And even a deeper number from that is 76.9% of them have resulted in positive workforce participation. They are getting jobs by way of the processes that, that we have developed and set up. I know you all familiar with the Work Ready Initiative by the state. This is a tier that's going to support that. I know that you all are probably familiar with the Recovery Ready Communities legislation that's coming down. This is a tier that's going to support that. This is home for me. I moved my family down here, I'm raising my daughter here. I want Russell County to be at the forefront of innovative and, and things that, that help the community, help our citizens. This is one of, we chose to pilot this here because this is home. So, with that, I can answer any questions that you all have, or I can step on in?
Is the fiscal court going to contribute?
Yes. Monday, the fiscal court approved it, but had a couple of questions I was able to answer and we moved on. And I have Jamestown next week.
I'm not clear on what you all trying to do really?
What this is, this is a web-based application.
I mean, what's it for? Is it for the homeless or the?
Anybody.
Road people?
That's anybody. There is no, there's no demographic or population that we'll say, you know, it's specific, it's for the citizens of Russell County that have a specific need.
Is it income-based or anything like that?
No, no, anybody at any time can access this.
Well, for example, I worked at the welfare office for 25 years and for the uneducated or people that are not in the know, the phone number is hard to find for resources.
Absolutely.
It's not ju, I mean, you have to know the exact name to look up a department or an agency or whatever. So, you know, I could, that's just from my own experience. People would say, well, I like to never found the phone number for this place. I mean, they usually could find where it was located, but those kind of resources, I think I can see would be helpful. My, I had a couple of questions. Number one, if, if you're talking about a truly indigent person, sometimes they might not have access to the internet and then they're putting a phone number and if you get your phone turned off because you didn't pay the bill, then that phone number's going to be different maybe every time you log on. Is there a tracking, something to pick up on that?
Absolutely.
Can you go back and talk about the resources? Because Sherri addressed that and we've already got that on our website and how we developed that and paper that, the resource guide.
Yes, okay, so we have, and this is kind of the inception of how this started. We started out with a sheet of paper with people's phone numbers and, and who to call. And that's what it was. We have expanded that, we have now a 23-county resource guide on our website with very similar information that can, you know, an individual can be given a paper copy if needed. Now, as far as what you're talking about, the change of a, a phone number and things like that, absolutely, you can access this, this, this web-based app as many times as an individual would need it. If I'm noticing, or my staff is noticing the same name quite a bit, that's the quickness, that's, that's what we're saying. And this is why this is innovative. There's nothing like this around. You have KYNEC and 211 and, and things like that. The other day I typed in, I was on, on a call and I typed it in, the closest resource that, that one of those other entities gave me, 70 miles away, when I know for my, you know, that what I needed or what I was searching for was about 100 yards from my office.
It looks, a look from this, from just this, like it, KYNEC is not user-friendly.
Absolutely.
And maybe that's my age, but it's not real user-friendly when you go onto that website and try to, to do things. So, if this is designed to be?
By design, it is, it is designed to be as user-friendly as possible.
Like, you know, for any sort of?
For any age group, basically, and I can tell you a couple of things. Our work has been recognized by the Kentucky Workforce Innovation Board. They are going to announce who's going to be piloting some projects for Kentucky and our region's going to be chosen. It should be announced within the next 10 days. And this is just part of the concept that we've came up with that's, they are aware of and they were like, how did you think of that? It's just the innovative team that we've got there, the things they have.
Well, now, if you're doing resources for recovery, for rehab, for addiction issues, do you think that you'll be eligible for some money through this opioid settlement that, that you're getting or you're trying to get in on that?
This is just a project I go very into.
On that pot of money, are you going to try to get into it?
Yeah.
We've had conversations and that, that I can't really divulge a whole lot, but, but that is on the radar.
Okay.
So, absolutely.
Judging from past project, past experience, you know, and I know, this will get abused by some people, or at least in the tent mate. What is your rules? I don't know what that's a proper term for you, but how do you curb that?
Absolutely.
What do you all do to curb that?
The utility of, of my position specifically is, I'm going to say it's going to be a lot of networking. It's going to be the contacts with these agencies, with these faith-based organizations, with the second mile, with God's Food Pantry, the Church of the Nazarene. You know, our various resources are going to be listed. I'll absolutely, me and my staff will keep a monitor of that and we're going to be able to track who's coming in, you know, what the situation is going on, because my goal is sustainability. My goal is somebody not abusing and utilizing this repetitively. I would love for, to get them on a path where they don't have to utilize it. But, by being able to track it, right now, we can't track it. We, there's no, there's no sharing or exchange of information between these agencies. That is what we are going to serve as. And to be able to say, this individual is abusing the system. We have had A, B, C, and D, you know, game plans go out and again, I don't believe in withholding opportunity from anybody, but there has to be a standard that they are held to. And we give every, you know, this individual a plan or, or assist them in some kind of way and they are not meeting the expectations that are extremely doable by the appropriate, you know, training professionals, they're going to have to get to a position to where they are going to do what's necessary to elevate their situation. Does that, does that make sense?
So, you can't cut them off off of them.
Oh, that, that will be communicated, yes, to all.
That's a rude way to say it, but you have to draw a line somewhere.
Well, you're not going to cut off their access to, to the?
No, no. What, the database, the database, we can look at any information. So, if you've come to the Food Pantry every month, that's a pattern. If you've came once, it's not a pattern. If you've came a couple of times, but that database is maintained and will keep that, all that data is part of the information that we need to collect and not only do we need to report back, because we have to look at the gaps in our community, community, our cities, see where we really have gaps that maybe we don't even know we have. And that needs to be reported back to the city councils and.
And, you know, this, this is kind of something that, that your question jogged in my, in my mind. We have individuals, unfortunately, that will go to faith-based organizations or churches and ask. I, I tend union down in Goss Ridge, so we've had it happen there. I know First Baptist has had it happen. This will be something that an individual from a church can call and say, hey, do you know, or, or what's the situation going on? Have they been connected with any resources? Because as we all know, they'll come give a good story to have it met and stuff. If they've abused and used the system, I'm going to be honest with you, all this individual has had every opportunity to do what they need to do.
Well, it takes away from somebody legitimately needing it.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm done.
Question.
Yes.
You've got three-year maintenance monitoring reporting, $14,400. That's for three years total cost of running the service?
Three years total cost for Russell County.
And that's split in for $4,800 per entity?
Yep.
Okay, so, but that's not what you're asking for tonight?
Tonight, I'm asking for the $1,333.
And that covers you for the pilot program that you're going to go online from now till?
Right, yeah.
10 months.
10 months.
Yes, to the next budget.
Just, just wanted to be clear.
And I would be willing to come as frequently, or if y'all don't like hearing from me, and report the findings, to find out, is this something viable that you want to continue to invest in?
I, I'd definitely like to hear more about.
Do we have to vote on it tonight or can we table it and maybe talk about it at the next meeting? Just my thoughts.
I will give each of you my contact information and?
Oh, I know.
You can give me many times. And I'll absolutely share and you can go on there and access that. I will tell you this, that we, we have an update of Russell County that will bring everything. These are generic, kind of really easy searches right now. We have the live, ready-to-go version to, ready to click go, but it's got to be with the start of the pilot.
So, we have to have support from all three before we can move forward to an initiative?
I, I'll make a, I don't know if I should put in a motion or not, a mayor, but for 10 months, let's, let's give it a try and then let's re-evaluate at the end of that time and let's see. In the meantime, you can come back and give us some feedback on how it's, if it's working or if it ain't. $1,300 ain't too bad to invest for.
We got to invest. Is that in the budget group?
I'd like to study a little.
Sorry.
Well, I mean.
I'd like to study a little bit more before we do anything.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second or do you want to make a motion? Table?
I make the motion, we table it till the next meeting.
So, you got a second? You got a motion, it's your table?
I'll, I'll second you, David.
Hold on a minute, wait a minute.
There's a, there's a, Larry's got a motion.
There's a motion on the floor. To give them $1,300. I need a second. You need a second?
No, I'll second. I think it's a good idea. I mean, but I mean, if we don't have the money to do it.
No, we didn't say.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea.
I like, I like that. I think it's a great idea because the thing about it is, we live in an information society, but yet your neighbor can pass away, we don't know it.
I got a motion by Larry, I got a second by Tommy. Give me a roll call.
So, now I need a roll call. And I got a first and second. Mr. Skaggs?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Boy, we vote no.
You've got a motion and a first and a second.
I got a motion and a second.
David, we're just doing it for 10 months. We're going to try.
If we got a motion, you, we're going to give them $1,300, $1,300.
And that'll do the first 10 months and you'll come back like in three months or four months and say, this is how many people?
If it hits, that's great. And if it doesn't hit, then, you know, we don't do it.
Yeah, we fold it after that, guys, if it don't work.
Because this could save one person's life, it's worth it.
I'm, I'm.
You voted no?
No, no.
I'm going to vote yes for, for 10 minutes.
I'm in.
So, you voted first, Chris. Better not call him first.
You're a mayor.
Okay, so I got it.
That's a yes.
Larry?
No. And I'm with?
David.
Ms. Daniel?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Barnes?
I'm going to vote yes, but I hate to let the bad guy vote no on it.
You want now, Ricky?
I want to hear more about it later. I'm voting yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like for, like you to come back. I mean, you don't have to come with this whole big huge.
Well, Sherri, Sherri, we got a motion on the floor and we done discussed it, so we're going to vote and then we're going to move on now.
Vote yes.
You had wanted, if somebody wanted to table it, we tabled it, so here's what we're doing. We've got a motion on the floor, go ahead, Chris, get everybody.
Yes. And Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries four to one.
Yes.
Four to one, so give them Chris to see where we go with the money and the next thing on agenda is, I need to know, Tim, have you got anything?
No.
Does it dial, please update, no, no, how it is?
Everything's, everything's employee building, uh, Tahoe's.
Good for you, appreciate you. Go ahead and see you back. And you mentioned Brian said he did too.
Has it down?
What about you now? Anything, anything economic relevant?
Uh, don't write an answer.
All righty, fellas, we got anything from the council before I get to the mayor's report?
One thing.
We'll get to you after Sherri gets done.
I just, I, I just want to recognize our mayor and say happy, happy birthday. And they get a lot closer together after you hit the big six zero.
Well, I've had a great day. I've had a great day. Thank you.
It make you feel good.
Chris, what you got?
Uh, this is on behalf of all of the city employees. We, we've got a little special thing for you.
There you go.
Here are your Louisville Cardinals, I want to wish you. Eddie, Coach Mack, here are your Louisville Cardinals, want to wish you a happy 60th birthday. Unbelievable, great milestone, got many more to come. Hope you enjoyed it. Understand that you're a lifelong Cardinals fan and that's really good to hear, so L's up. Very, very appreciative of your support. One thing I'd say is, you're probably the first referee that I've ever given a happy birthday shout-out to. I usually don't do that, you know, I'm not very kind to those guys. You know, they give me technical fouls, they, I don't know, they, they don't make me feel good during the season. So, you're lucky it's the offseason. In all seriousness, happy birthday. You've been incredible mayor of the city of Russell Springs. You care deeply about the community and your buddy, Chris Ramsey, wanted me to pass that along. So, anyway, have a great 60th birthday, August 12th, right around the corner. I'm actually in the airport, heading out of town for a couple of days before we get this fall semester started, but nothing more important on my plate than wishing you a happy birthday. L's up. See you, Eddie. Have a good one, man. Happy birthday.
That's impressive. Appreciate you all. I don't know how much. Thank you all. Does anybody else got anything?
Can't hurt to talk though.
I like saying go guards. Just want to let the people know that the road construction at May, at Mamie Frog is done. The state done that. I've had some people talking about the city taxpayers' money stuff. I didn't have nothing to do with the city of Russell Springs, we just kind of partnered up, got them what they needed. No financial, no financials from the city of Russell Springs were involved in that. And it's great up there, it's nice and I've talked to Rita and I've talked to some of them up there, they're tickled to death to have it done, so. And then the next thing is, we've begun, we have begun the process of fixing some of the streets. We're planning on the road work this September, October of this year. I want to thank the state for helping us grade the streets. Of course, we can't do, can't do nothing with it till it's determined on the base and the finances of the grades and we received that pretty quick, so we'll be announcing some roads that we're going to blacktop. And if you've seen out, I know that's why I said Ricky, Ricky was in, said, we'd had a lot of the council members tell us about different spots and different places in the road. We fixed over by the old city hall where it was, I think David Good said something about that earlier too. Richardson Drive up there had a big hole in it. Bluebird, even though we got Bluebird and we got the Manche and Shawnee and a few of them on the schedule to blacktop, we went ahead and fixed Black, uh, Bluebird anyway because it had fell off there and was afraid somebody'd run off the road there. And then the next thing is the sidewalks, thank Tommy, I want to thank you for that because the sidewalks, they've been here working all week on the sidewalks. They're going to continue to get them down to where they're level and they're, a lot of them's unlevel, uneven and stuff and they're not safe, so we've hired a company to come in, they're going to level everything up, sand everything down that has to be down and it's going to look good when they get done and they come in, they're going to do both sides of the road all the way from one end to the other. So, I think they're down to about right here today, so they should be done maybe by first of next week. So, just to give you all some updates and that's all I've got. I need a motion to adjourn.
Eddie, I have a question. When you were talking?
Should I ask that before, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order. You were talking about the blacktopping? Are we going to try to address up there, is it Sharon Ain, Sharon Anne?
We submitted all of them, that's what I just read.
Is that on our list though?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's went into the state, so that's, that's on the list.
It's on for up there.
We've submitted all that stuff, so if anybody's got any problems about any road, anybody says anything to you about blacktop, go up to Sharon Anne, camp around, drive it. If your road's worse than that, we'll start blacktopping it tomorrow, so. But, that's all. We got, I need a motion to adjourn.
Ladies and gentlemen, I make a motion with adjourn.
Thank you, Larry, got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, but Sherri, I will favor say aye.